I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for.
Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. If we could have roll call, please.
Luther.
Here.
Burstad.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg.
Here.
Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Summerfeld.
Here.
Great. We have a full council. Thank you, everyone. No special recognitions this evening. Approval of minutes would be next in order. If somebody would like to make a motion to approve the minutes, do that at this time. And go ahead, Chad.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay, and seconded by Ryan. Go ahead, Ryan.
Second Chad's motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public hearings. No public hearings for the evening. That puts us down to public comments. Public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. Feel free to come up to the podium, make sure the microphone is on, and do give us your name and your address and do sign in also. So at this moment, we will open up public comments.
Good evening. My name is Mark Mastelier. I reside at nineteen sixteen Third Street West, Menominee, Wisconsin. I'm here tonight to speak about agenda item number six B, B as in bicycle. The Menominee City Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee addressed, discussed the need for this pathway in the very early years of its formation, not long after Mayor Knack created and commissioned this committee some ten years ago. Most of the members of the original committee are still serving. This committee represents a diverse group of bicycle riding enthusiasts, ranging from sport to recreational to commuting, domestic use and international, both on trails and streets, and also a serious attention to walkways. To be clear, I'm talking about the sidewalk pathway connecting from the government center to the judicial center on the north side of Highway twenty-nine on the east side of Menominee. Numerous committee members have witnessed firsthand pedestrians walking or biking along Highway twenty-nine as a commute from the judicial center to industrial park to Menominee. Regardless of the reasons, the commuters are traveling without a vehicle. In every instance, my fellow committee members expressed a concern for safety. Many of these travelers use that space all months of the year in all weather conditions and sometimes not much sunlight and even in darkness. I had my own personal experience when I needed that pathway. One morning I was commuting on my bicycle to work at three M. All was fine at six AM until I arrived at the end of the pathway at the government center and realized, oh, yeah, that's right. It was decided to take the pathway up to that point, but it wasn't installed all the way to the judicial center where I could turn onto Stokie Parkway and the bike trail. I just decided to bike the ditch a couple of hundred feet along Highway twenty-nine. I'm a good biker. I have a hybrid bike. I'm not getting on to the road. I made it to work on time. Bicycles like cars will travel anywhere streets and trails are provided unless you're a mountain biker, who may or may not ride on a trail or even if one is provided. I'm not a mountain biker or an off-road biker. The point being, the pathway sidewalk provides a safe route for walkers and may inspire more citizens to commute by bike to the industrial park who aren't working twelve-hour shifts if it was available. The existing trail along the Red Cedar Street does add a bit more distance to arrive at the same location, that being the Stokie Parkway and Bike Trail. The Bike and Pedestrian Advisor Committee has asked me to present their support of completing that sidewalk pathway. If you have questions for me, I'd appreciate them now because I do need to leave as soon as I'm done.
Well, Mark, thank you so much for that information and the Bike Pedestrian Committee. You guys do an amazing job, and I appreciate you serving on that. We are unable to ask your questions at this time. However, I think that you were explicit enough in explaining that I don't think there'll be very many questions because I think everybody understands the importance of that trail system connection. So thank you so much for being here this morning, Mark, and appreciate your efforts.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. If somebody else would like to speak in public comments, now is your opportunity to do so.
My name's Jeff Rowley, three thirteen Main Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Downtown Menominee, specifically the Winter Days Parade Event Committee, and we are asking to amend our event permit to add the burn barrels. So basically, I'm here to ask permission rather than forgiveness. The burn barrels are something that have been a part of the Winter Days Parade Celebration for going on the past twenty-some years now, and it was recently brought to our attention that we were violating a city ordinance in having those burn barrels. So the burn barrels are a popular place for people to congregate during the parade that provide warmth, especially in inclement weather. We generally have five of them, one at the intersection, a third for the public, another one across the street for our judges, one down at the Stout Plaza, one at the Triangle Intersection on Crescent and Main, and then another one at our staging area for the for the floats. So I hope that you will all amend our special event permit and allow us to continue to have our burn barrels to keep everybody warm during the Winter Days Parade.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate you being here. And yes, yeah, we're trying to play it by the book this year. So it's all good. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in public comments? Now is your opportunity to do so. Public comments is open. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments and move on with the rest of our meeting. Okay, under five A unfinished business, mending Title fourteen, Chapter four to adjust minimum lot size for unsued lots created on or after January first, two thousand twenty-four to one acre. Now, this has already been introduced. We've had the first reading, second reading, tonight would be a third reading. So with that being said, and the adoption, third reading and the adoption. So if anybody would like to make a motion to waive the third reading, we could do so at this time. I stand corrected. All we need to do tonight is adopt. So somebody would like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance. We could do that at this time. Oh, Lee Swabs, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, amending Title four, Chapter four of the city code to adjust minimum lot size for unsued lots created or modified on or after January first of two thousand twenty-four to one acre.
Very good. Good motion, Ben.
And just to confirm, you're adopting the ordinance amendment as presented, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, is there a second to Lee's motion? Penny?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Luther.
Yes.
Burstad.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yanko.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
No.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Moving on to six A. On a new business, six A is proposed agreement with Menominee Rural Fire and Ambulance District for two thousand twenty-four supportive fire and ambulance services. I'm going to turn this over to Eric. You can speak on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So our two thousand twenty-four Rural Fire and Ambulance District contract is up for renewal. We're asking that the council support a renewal at the same rates as we had as last year with the anticipation that in two thousand twenty-four, we will be talking with that district or with the persons that are inside of that district for renegotiations of those contracts for moving from two thousand twenty-five and beyond. Chief Class is present here in the audience and can speak more eloquently on the topic if you wish to ask him some questions.
Chief, would you like to touch on it a little bit, in case I didn't do it justice?
This is just a continuation of the twenty-one to twenty-three contract. Frank Bamer, who was president of that rural board, passed away earlier this year, and I've been working with him on getting something in line with his passing and Eric taking over in the position that he did. I felt a one-year extension on the previous contract would be advisable, so everybody can kind of get their their hands wrapped around what we've got going.
Any questions for Chief? I know that in the future, I know there might be some modifications to this. Do, will you be having those modifications forecasted in the near future?
As far as rates?
Right.
Correct. And I think we spoke, I spoke with Eric about that, and that's something that we're going to discuss with the rural board at the meeting coming up October twenty-third is moving forward with with fees and services, so.
Okay. One more question. Last we got you up there. You know, ambulance calls, EMS calls versus actual fire calls, do you have a number in your head? You know, how many, how many fires do you go to versus how many ambulance, you know?
It's roughly seventy-five percent EMS and twenty-five percent fire calls, so.
Great.
And that runs statistically true annually, so.
And how staffed are you right now with everything that you've got? Are you full-staffed or?
How much time do you have? No, we are, compared to the state average, we are understaffed for the size of the area that we serve and the number of calls that we go on. Roughly twenty-eight thousand people that we serve in the city and the rural, and we're going to do over four thousand calls this year. And that, per person, per firefighter, that's more than what Eau Claire is doing. So we're looking for people and so.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Ah, well, you gave yourself a little rah-rah there, so.
I appreciate that.
Any questions for Chief? No? Okay, thank you. And if anybody wants to make a motion to support this, we could do that at this time. Penny?
I will make a motion to support the agreement with the Menominee Rural Fire and Ambulance District for two thousand twenty-four for a one-year term.
Yeah, thank you. And Laura?
I'll second Penny's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? No? Okay. Voice vote, okay. So then at that point, then a regular vote is in order. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, thank you. And moving on to six B, proposed agreement with Dunn County for USH, USH twelve trail project. Oh, yep. And discussion and motion approving. So that's the, right in front of the judicial center. Dave, you want to bring us up to speed on that?
Yeah, so this is a trail that's been desired and it was sure documents prior to that. There's a gap in our system between Lookout Road and Stokie Parkway, and then for a short stretch on Stokie Parkway to the north, this trail will will create about a two-point-three million, three-point-three mile loop, including Stokie Parkway, Domain Drive, and Red Cedar Street. We've had some discussions with county staff about this project. They proposed that they construct it and we split the cost with them fifty-fifty. We felt the city staff, that was a pretty reasonable proposal, and we would probably recommend using ARPA dollars to, on our our portion of it. They estimate the cost at a little under two hundred and fifty thousand, so our share would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So there's an agreement that has been proposed to the county. They have not yet approved it, so I'm asking for the council to approve it as presented here, and then if, for some reason, they wanted to make some minor modifications, we can certainly bring it back to this body for an amendment. But as it is, I'm recommending or requesting approval of that and then also to take the money out of the ARPA funds that we have available to us.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Roland?
I just have, looking at the map, have one concern about how it, the end of it towards Lookout Road, how it ends. That it's not going to get used as it's drawn out there.
So the, at the west end, they've made some changes to how their parking lot lines up. They didn't show it terribly well here, but right now the trail kind of ends into their southwest corner of their parking lot, and they will intercept it from that point and then bring it out towards Highway twelve to continue.
Okay, so that is going to be fixed?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve this agreement with Dunn County as presented, then.
Great. Can you make a part of your motion that funds be used from the ARPA funds as well?
Yes. What Ben said.
Okay, well, I think this is a great use of ARPA funds, and so Gretchen?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, great. Motion been made and seconded to expand the trail system and agreement with Dunn County as well. So without any additional discussion, roll call vote, please.
Burstad.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yanko.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld. Luther.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Six C, proposed library tax resolution. I'll turn this over to Eric.
Yeah, so on the agenda tonight is a proposed resolution that would allow us to waive being taxed by the county for library. The reason why we want this is because we already provide library costs that exceed our minimum requirements, and this is a part of a resolution that we have to do annually to make this no, excuse me, to make this desired by the city, so that way we're not getting double taxed. We do have Director Stirk here from the library that can also explain it again more eloquently than I can on the library tax and how that works. So if you wish to ask her questions, we can bring her to the podium and Mr. Stirk, why don't you come on up anyway and give a quick statement about this and why we're bringing it here today?
Basically, this is something that you all would want to sign off on annually, so that, as as Eric said, you don't, we don't get double taxed. The county imposes a tax for library service to the county residents, and you're, because we're a municipal library, you're already supporting us. Thank you very much, and you shouldn't have to pay twice. So I would encourage you to opt out of paying the tax.
Well said.
Well, Jolene, I think we've done that in the past, but I think it's time that we play by the book. So we're starting a new chapter. It's not bad. You finally got it. Okay. Any other questions for Jolene while she's up there? No? Does anybody want to support this motion with a motion?
I'd like to support the resolution as presented.
Great. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to Laura's motion? Lee, go ahead, please.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All in favor? Need a roll call? Unclear. Better do a roll call. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yanko.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Burstad.
Yes.
Thank you, Jolene. All right. Proposed agreement with Dunn County for two thousand twenty-four tax collection. We've done this in the past, but I think I'll have Eric touch on this.
Sure. Well, we're on the topic of taxes, and we can talk about this particular agreement. So this agreement is, would allow Dunn County to collect the taxes for us on our behalf, and it's an agreement that we do routinely, and we have to enter this agreement annually. So hereby presented before you, and hopefully you will accept it, and then Dunn County can collect the taxes for us.
Okay, do they charge us a fee for that, Eric?
They do not.
Okay, so in that regards, if somebody would like to make a motion to support this, open up the floor to the council. Lee?
Make a motion to continue the agreement between the city of Menominee and Dunn County through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Good motion? Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Chad?
Well, I'll second Mr. Schwab's motion.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call? I have a roll call. Roll call vote, please.
Yanko.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Burstad.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Thank you. And moving on. Six E, request from the police department to use insurance funds for patrol squad uplift and new police chief vehicle. I'll turn this over to Eric.
Sure, I'll do my best to explain this one. So recently, a squad car was struck by a drunk driver earlier this year, and we received an insurance settlement to the tune of about sixty-two thousand dollars. What the police department is proposing is to take that sixty-two thousand dollars, use some of that money to take the current chief's car, which is an unmarked car that is not equipped with all the necessary equipment for patrol use, assign that into the patrol fleet, move equipment that can be salvageable or repurchase equipment that can be placed in it to make it a fully functioning patrol vehicle, use that difference in money to acquire a civilian model car for then the chief to use as his vehicle. Based on his presentation that he can, he can accomplish this by staying within budget on that insurance settlement. So they're looking for permission to be able to make that switch and make that purchase as well. Now, Commander Hagan, I saw him in the audience. He is here from the police department to also explain it. If you would come on up to the podium, please, and he can answer questions as to how they would make this happen in this particular year, should you approve this action.
Yeah, so Commander Hagan, first off, does the, is the squad that the chief has been driving now, is that of similar vintage or what, what, what kind of vehicle is that?
He's currently driving a two thousand and twenty Ford Interceptor, police interceptor. So it's a few years old, but it only has about twenty thousand miles on it, so it's a lot quicker, quicker fix to be able to outfit that into our patrol fleet than it would be to try and order a new vehicle, which I think has been presented to the council in the past. It's posing real challenges right now.
Okay, that's good information. Is there any questions for Mr. Hagan? Yes, Gretchen?
For the chief's vehicle, are there any restrictions on the type of vehicle? Does it have to be, you know, a certain specs, or could it be a smaller, more fuel-efficient vehicle?
I'm, I want to add something to that. As long as you ask that question, I almost wonder if it's important that we, when we do get the vehicle that could be rolled into the, into the regular squad as a part of.
Yeah, as part of why I was asking, but also since those are not attainable as quickly.
I think that's a great question. I'll let you answer that.
The benefit of having the Ford Explorer, as Chief Hollister has proposed here, is that it adds additional utility to the vehicle for other types of situations. If we need to use it to haul additional equipment for major crime scenes or to take across the state if we're going to some training and we have to carry multiple people with it, just give some additional utility and flexibility to be able to use for a variety of different things.
Okay, good answer. Good question. Is there any other questions for Commander? Yes.
Would the chief's car be outfitted with all the, the equipment that is normally in a?
It wouldn't be outfitted with all of the equipment. It would have some, some basic lighting in it, and a radio, and some, some small equipment that we probably already are in possession of, in case he has to help out on an accident scene or something like that. Just still a police vehicle, it wouldn't, just wouldn't be used for general patrol use.
Another good question. Yeah, I don't know. Is there any other questions for Commander Hagan? Penny?
I will make a motion to grant the request from the police department to use their insurance funds from the accident to take the current police chief's vehicle, make that a patrol vehicle, and purchase a new Ford Explorer for the department.
Sounds like a good motion, Ben. Good motion, Eric?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion remain seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
McCullough. Yes. Schwabs.
Yes.
Gents.
Yes.
Solberg.
Yes.
Schlue.
Yes.
Erdman.
Yes.
Summerfeld.
Yes.
Luther.
Yeah.
Burstad.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Yanko.
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us down to six F, review of the two thousand twenty-four general fund budget subsidy requests and capital improvement plan, discussion, et cetera. We, we are going to have a special meeting on November sixth at five thirty, but I'm going to turn this over to Eric. Eric?
Sure. In front of you, when you came in today, you were handed a copy of the agency financial assistance or the subsidy requests that were put out in front of you. Thank you, Mayor. And part of that meeting or that entire meeting of the special meeting for November sixth at five thirty PM will be to go over those subsidy requests, allow those organizations to be able to answer questions and make presentations in front of you about why it is that they want to have their request granted, and for you a chance to be able to question them on what they plan on using with the funds. Additionally, in front of you, you see a copy of a capital improvement plan. It outlines what our, our borrowing was for two thousand twenty-four, where we'll be in the second year of a borrowing cycle for capital improvement projects. So those projects that you saw approved for twenty-three and twenty, two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four for the bonds and notes borrowing that we did earlier this spring reappear for two thousand twenty-four. And then we also projected out some potential borrowing for two thousand twenty-five and beyond. Again, those, there's no guarantee of those. That's all subject to council approval and potential borrowing based on budget, debt service allowance, et cetera. Now, in regards to the two thousand twenty-four general operating budget, we've been waiting for some numbers back on debts, final numbers, as well as matching them with our accounts, so to make sure that we have money to be able to cover everything that we want to be able to do and also to make adjustments. I've been working with Lowell Prangy on it for the last several weeks and intensely here over the past week, week and a half. We anticipate having those numbers in place by the end of tomorrow, and then hopefully we will be able to get out a draft of the budget on Wednesday or Thursday this week, and then that will be for a full review then on November sixth at seven PM. So then you'll be able to ask questions and take a look at it. The general operating budget will also be posted as a class two notice, which requires us to post the, the draft operation budget twice in the newspapers for the community to be able to have a chance at public comment during public hearings. So we'll be looking for that here very shortly, and just from personal loan, I want to thank you again for allowing Lowell Prangy to assist me in being able to put together the budget. It is quite a nuanced process and been a, been an exceptional learning experience, to say the least. So I, I wish I had it out sooner tonight. That was my hope to have that done. The numbers were delayed, but we're working diligently to get it, get it completed and get it to you in your hands, so you can make the appropriate decisions as you see fit.
Great, thanks. Nice report, Eric. I think that it's, it's really wonderful that we have access to Lowell and Eric and Lowell and Pam. And we've all had a, spent some time at it, but I think hats off to, to Eric for, for doing a great job on that. So it'll, you'll have good numbers, you'll have good numbers to work with you and share with you in the near future. So hang in there, we'll have numbers for you. That, moving down to six nine, six G. Yeah, G. Proposed to amend Winter Days Special Event Permit on December seventh, two thousand twenty-three to allow burn barrels for the public right away. Ryan?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to approve this amendment to their special event permit.
Okay. And Chad?
I would like to second Ryan's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Six H, proposed ordinance annexing a nineteen-point-six-two acre parcel owned by Harmony Harmony Parks LLC adjacent to Eagle Point Road from the town of Red Cedar and establishing temporary agricultural zoning. Eric, if you want to start and turn it over to Dave?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to give it right over to Director Schofield because he has been the one who's been working quite closely on this particular project, and we'll explain it better than I can.
Yeah, so on, and you're packing in on the screen here is a parcel nineteen-point-six-two acres. It's owned by Harmony Parks. It's a gentleman that lives out in Oregon and owns it through the, an LLC. He's proposing to sell it to the Wilkins family, who is, by the way, the same family that's purchasing nine-point-seven-five acres from us on the south side of Eagle Point Road. They are proposing to annex this property to the city of Menominee. Before you tonight is a couple of things, but the only action that we need you to take is a referral to plan commission for the temporary zoning. So our, our practice has been to, when annexations come in, they're given a So our our practice has been to, when annexations come in, they're given a temporary zoning of ag. Um, and going through the code and and state statute, Ben and I have determined that we'd prefer to have you uh, refer that temporary zoning to the plan commission first before adopting uh, an annexation. So um, the action tonight would be to refer the temporary zoning to uh, the plan commission. There will be eventually, uh, this would come back before you at your November sixth meeting for annexation um, uh, introduction, uh, possible for you for the first and second readings and and adoption. You could certainly um, play that out longer if you'd like. Um, and then there would eventually be a rezoning request by the property owners. They would like to use this land as an I three industrial uh, zoning.
Ben, do you? Okay, good job, David. Uh, so at this point, if anybody would like to make a motion to recommend a plan commission, now would be opportunity to do so. Randy?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion and refer this to the planning commission.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Penny?
I will second Randy's motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer this to the plan commission. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Uh, budget transfers. Um, yes, we have a budget transfer. See, Jeremy is here tonight. Also, Jeremy, uh, step up to the podium, please. What in the heck? You got a roofie leaky or a?
Yes. A leaky roof, yes.
Tell me your deal.
It was uh, patched in two thousand fifteen. And with the amount of rain we've had the last few days, we noticed it leaking again. And we had a roofer get up and uh, inspect it. And the entire membrane is failed, so around the top, so.
Okay, so you got extra water in our water.
Correct. Yes.
It's not supposed.
Not where we want it. We want it going out the pipes, not dripping on them.
Ah, I see. Okay. Uh, what's the amount on that? Mm-hmm. Twenty-eight thousand, okay. And he's just rolling money from one to another?
It's going from account that's healthy into another account. Okay, so it's just a reward. Okay, so if you'd like to support this budget transfer, um, council, uh,
open the floor to you. Lee?
Yeah, I will uh, make a motion to approve the transfer.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Okay, Laura with a second. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please. Thank you, Jeremy.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That takes us down to the mayor's report um, and communications. I'll be brief. There'll be a special city council meeting uh, held on November sixth, twenty twenty-three at five thirty to review the subsidies. So be sure that you put that on your calendar. Uh, November sixth at uh, seven o'clock, uh, the city council meeting will provide the opportunity for council to review proposed general operating budget for twenty twenty-four. On Friday, October twenty-seventh, from three to five, a downtown Menominee will be hosting its annual trick or treating event. So those that you don't have your costume on tonight, be sure to wear one and go downtown and uh, and enjoy. Uh, Friday night, I had a chance, this last Friday, had a chance to um, attend the um, performance at Agatha Christie's Murder on the Orient Express, the Maple Tainer. Uh, good show. I knew it was gonna happen before it happened, but I kept a suspenser for my wife, so. But um, anytime you can take in a show at the Maple Tainer, um, it's always, it's always a good time. Uh, that being said, I'll turn it over to um, Eric.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, I've been working uh, closely with uh, former administrator Lowell Prangy on the budget and looking forward to be bringing that forward to you for evaluation and consideration. Uh, additionally, uh, the, I had the great opportunity to go to the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference. The, that group, the IACP, uh, flew me out there at their expense to be able to speak at a panel with the Philadelphia Police Department on uh, creating deflection and diversion programs in communities, both large metropolitan and then small rural like ours. And uh, we were part of the one of the first workshops that uh, were put on on Saturday morning at eight thirty in the morning. It's a tough one. But we had seventy-five, seventy-five chiefs that were in attendance there and it went off very well. So I was very grateful to have the opportunity that IACP had recognized our program, a project hope. And to be on stage with some, uh, frankly, uh, some great luminaries from the Philadelphia Police Department talking about a very similar program they have. And so uh, that conference, if you're unaware of the size of it, about sixteen thousand people attend that particular conference. And there's any number of about twenty to thirty workshops that take place throughout the day at, within hour increments for eight hours of the day. So it's an extremely large conference, very well attended. And uh, and it's, and really it's attended internationally by people, so.
I just want to add to that, too. Um, we should be very proud that Eric was chosen to be at that and not only be at the the event, but also participate in the event. Uh, so I'm just, tickles me that uh, that he's willing to go to these things and and speak and also offer up um, project hope in such a fashion. Uh, and so I'm very proud of him and uh, very proud of Menominee for supporting the program. So sorry.
You, Mayor, appreciate it. And that, that is really it. And uh, Director Schofield, do you have any, any updates tonight?
I'm gonna keep it brief. We're working on, uh, Hell Road is complete and we're working on the trail on Stokie Trail near the river. So we should be wrapping that up here in the next um, week and a half or so.
Great. That was brief. Thank you. Uh, any communications from council? Mary?
So, and I don't know who to address this to, but um, TDS is that, who is, is? What is taking them so long in at South Broadway? They've got some really deep holes dug for a very long time. Does anybody have any insight into that?
Yeah, that's actually Excel Energy. So they're replacing their gas main along there. And then while they're doing it, they're they're installing for TDS. So it's, it's a company called PSC, Primorial Service Corporation, something like that. Um, they're replacing all the three inch gas along Broadway. So they, this was the same crew and the same in project essentially that they were doing from Twenty First Street up to Thirteenth uh, early this year. And now they're just going the rest of the way.
Any idea when it might be done?
I I don't, I haven't gotten a date from them.
Okay, thank you.
I would hope by the next time it'll be complete.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other communications, Penny?
Um, just a couple of things. I'm not sure being that I wasn't at the last meeting, if it was uh, brought to you guys' attention. The downtown or the Main Street director has been replaced with uh, Becca Schoburn. She just started her first week this week, which is exciting. We have a meeting on Wednesday morning. Um, and then also it's witch's night out in downtown Menominee on Thursday. So come to the downtown businesses and see what we all have going on.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Lee?
Yeah, I was very interested that Cody sending out that uh, survey with his, in his ward. And, you know, you couldn't get into it if you seem like. I'm just curious if we could be, rest of us could see what the questions are that he's asking.
Okay, perhaps you could do a printout. Uh, how do you get to it, uh, number one?
Um, it's a Qualtrics link, but I think I can get like a PDF printed version of the questions. I sent some over to Gretchen, who was interested in looking at them before, but yeah, I can provide that.
Perhaps you could send it down to Pam and we could disperse it. It's it's um, uh, difficult sometimes otherwise. So if you could send it over to Pam and then she can take care of dispersion, that would be great. We'll try to get it, talk to you.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it issued out in a way that doesn't create a walking quorum.
There you go. Thank you. Okay. Uh, anything else for um, communications? Gretchen?
I haven't spoken about uh, Dunn County Transit Ridership, but it it is going really strong. Uh, they had some increases in numbers. Uh, the stout stout route is is excellent. And they have evening routes now up to North Menominee. So um, encourage everyone to try out the bus.
Okay, and just to report back, I've had such positive um, connotations from the new director. Uh, so he must be doing a wonderful job. And I also believe that the shelters have helped a lot, you know, so that there's an actual bus stop. Uh, so people know where to go and and they're protected also while they're standing there. So uh, but yes, readers, uh, ridership is up. So good deal. Any other communications? No? Okay, we're gonna move on with the rest of our meeting. Uh, brings us down to claims. There's a revised claims list on your table. If anybody'd like to uh, make a motion to support this, we could do that at this time. Mary?
I would make a motion to um, pay the bills of the revised list.
Okay, motion's on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Penny?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Okay, motions have been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No licenses.
Okay, there is not any licenses to be passed at this time. Uh, that means we have a a short closed session. And I'd like to have a motion to go into closed session. If somebody would like to make that motion, this is the opportunity. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Thanks, Laura. Jeff?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Um. Do we need a roll call on this one?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote. Thank you.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Recording stopped.
You guys want us, you want us, all want to stand up, set your legs just for a minute? Uh, Dave's gonna get us uh, acquainted with being um.
Steven would have to ask you to leave the.